The Celine Planning Commission, come to order.
Pledge your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Young, absent. Carroll?
Here.
Bosdick?
Here.
Marl?
Here.
Gierba?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Beardley?
Here.
Heft?
Here.
Troika?
Here.
As well as Chief Planner Harbach, Community Director Harrington, and Recording Secretary Catney. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Move to approve is distributed, Mr. Chair. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes? Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments, persons requested but not required, to state their name and address. Comments will be limited to three minutes. If there are none, we'll move on. Public hearing. Zoning amendment, creating ordinance number 858, an ordinance to amend the zoning of the parcel M-133640001, located at 7641 North Ann Arbor, Celine, Michigan, from AG Agricultural to OS Office Services. Mr. Chair?
Absolutely. So it's action item 2320, and as you mentioned, it's an ordinance technically, but it is a rezoning of a property. So it is currently home to Celine Picture Frame. It is being annexed into Celine. Our City Council has moved and accepted that, so we're just waiting for final state confirmation on that end, but Lodi Township has agreed to a 425 agreement, so it's not going to the Boundary Commission. It's one of a few islands. You can see there's a string of properties there. You probably can't see clearly, but there's about nine within that section of Celine that are island properties, meaning they're fully surrounded by the city of Celine, but for a long time, and canonically, they've been part of Lodi Township. It is zoned for agricultural use by Lodi. As you can tell, looking at that strip, it is not likely to ever revert back to an agricultural use. It is considered a nonconforming use under Lodi's own zoning code, and one of the petitioners who asked for the annex to the city has informed us that when looking to change that use, Lodi informed them they would not extend the nonconformity, which made it more of a problem for them. The 2017 master plan does denote what they think the future land use of these island properties would be, had it slated for PB, which is professional business. However, in the proposed 2023 update that we'll be talking about immediately after this action item, it has the future land use as OS for office service. So the request is a rezone. It is an ordinance, though, and there, within our own standards and ordinances, there's not specific guidelines or questions or standards for the planning commission to specifically consider when looking at rezoning requests. The applicant, just as a note, is not proposing, or I guess the applicant, the property owner is not proposing site alterations. The property is being rezoned. It is being brought into the city of Celine, and we have to establish our own zoning designation for the property. It's being proposed to be purchased and converted, something that would be in between a workshop, studio, and a private lodge, but I will let the public comment speak to that as well. There's also a letter attached, kind of explaining the hopes for the space in the future. The planning commission should consider that the request conformity with the master plan. It's always crucial for any rezone. As we're updating the master plan, your thoughts on whether this area should remain PB or OS, kind of play a pivotal role into that? And as I mentioned, it's currently AG. Should the property owner seek to make site improvements? They will likely require a site plan review, so the applicant is aware that, the property owner is aware of that, and then additionally, they would now come to the city of Celine for building permits, should they have to do a remodel or something of that sort. So for your edification, I included in the packet, I'm not going to read these all off to you, but these are by right, uses allowed in the office service district. What the proposed owner of the building is expecting to do would be somewhere between studios for music or dance or artistic instruction and a private service club, fraternal organization and lodge hall. Additionally, the existing use would potentially be allowed by right, depending on how you slice some of these definitions, of retail supply, retail sales of office supplies, computer and business machines, and personal computer equipment. Picture frames are not exactly office supplies, but in terms of intensity of use, it fits that better than a lot of our other options within our code. And there's also special land uses. One thing that we thought might jump out to the public, but not seeing very many people in the public comment here, are items eight and nine, which are safety compliance facilities for both the medical and adult-use marijuana. I'd just like to stress that it's not a dispensary. The applicant would never allow this property to be a dispensary, but neither would our zoning code. So it would be a specific safety compliance facility. I'm not exactly familiar with how they work. We don't have any in Celine besides dispensaries themselves. We don't have any other marijuana-type users in our community. We also just did a brief comparison with the OS lot standards to see if there would be any other nonconformities with the rezone, created by the rezone, and essentially, there are none. There's one aspect related to building height. I can't confirm for sure that the building is only 10 feet tall, but it is definitely less than the allowed amount of 35 feet. So with setbacks, with lot coverage, with lot size and lot width, the property does meet all our property standards for the office service district, so it would not create a nonconformity. Additionally, parking is more specifically use-dependent, so depending on how the property changes over time, so too might its parking requirement, but the site is sufficiently parked per our off-street parking standards for both the current and the proposed use. So looking at the alignment with the 2017 master plan, you can see there with the big red arrow that it was originally deemed to be professional office. That does not perfectly line up with our code, which is a professional business district, so there's a chance you could maybe try to infer professional office as office service, but given that office service has its own specific designation within the master plan future land use map, for clarity's sake, it makes sense to ensure that if that's what the city's intended future land use is for that site, that we're modeling that. Additionally, a point of consideration when looking at what should this be rezoned as was, well, would the existing user, a picture frame shop, be allowed? And according to our professional business district standards, no, a Celine picture frame wouldn't be a nonconforming user of that space if it was zoned PB. So then here is the 2023 proposed future land use map that shows that transition into office service. So our recommendation is that the planning commission recommend approval and adoption of ordinance 858, rezoning the parcel at 67641 North Ann Arbor Street to office service, OS to the City Council.
Any questions?
Question. You just mentioned, as if it was relevant, that the existing use, nonconforming, in the township, should have a bearing in our decision. I'm not sure I would see it that way, but maybe there's some reason why.
I meant if we, if we, oh, sorry, I went back on my screen. If we zoned it as professional business per the future land use map of 2017, it would be nonconforming in our zoning district. So yeah, I guess I did mention it's nonconforming in Lodi, too, but that was more the reason or the genesis for the request to annex in the first place.
Yeah, I, I think I would look, I'd look at this and say, I don't really care what business is going in it yet. I care what it is, and if it was coming into the city, I would care what it, I wouldn't automatically look at what it is in the township and apply that to the city.
Right, absolutely.
That's what I'm trying to say. Okay. And how do we look at this, in your view, in the context of a broader decision later in the master plan and the rezoning or the re-future land use expectation of that whole strip, and make this decision almost like it's a spot zone because we haven't made the other decision?
Well, I would add that it kind of is by its nature going to be a spot zone because it's one of nine properties on that strip that are not, that have, one of them has now become part of the city of Celine, but we will have to rezone those other eight if and when, more likely if, or sorry, when, than, more than if, when they come to the city of Celine. So I think it's going to be a process. This is our first opportunity to make a legislative decision on what do we really want that, that stretch of property to be.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
So, oh, just a quick question. For those nine properties that are islands, do they connect to city utilities?
I'm not sure on the status of all of them. If they are not currently connected to the city utilities, the City Council's policy is that they must be annexed before they can access city utilities, but I don't know on the other eight, or even on this one.
I believe they're all connected to city utilities.
Okay. I was just curious, because really, they should have been connected, they should have been annexed at the time they were connected, but that may have been a while back in time.
I believe it was. The treasurer, Cole, manages utility billing, so.
Yes, they are already connected to the utilities, from my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
And have been for many decades. Mr. Troika.
Another question. And maybe this is a function of our need to look at some of these permitted uses between professional and office, but I see some uses in this office district that don't seem at all like office. It don't really seem like service. The thought that a moose lodge could come into this property when it's zoned that way seems contrary to what I would want if I were a resident in that immediate neighborhood.
Right. I think there was originally written to be less intense, potentially, commercial-type uses. I would say it's one of our, this in the I-1 district would be another great example of it's kind of a hodgepodge of a variety of different things. This on the lower-intensity end of commercial, and then the I-1 on the higher end of commercial intensity. So I think that was the general intent, but I would agree that the name of the district is in of itself very misleading.
And would you think that a moose lodge would be appropriate on this site?
Well, this size site, probably not, because it's rather small and narrow, but I think that's the type of thing that the site plan review would help negate, especially depending on how many members they choose to have, what parking they would be required to provide.
Sure. I'm thinking more ahead, because if in fact the entire strip becomes rezoned, you could put several parcels together, and it becomes really more of a site plan issue than a land use issue, but just on the theory that the site plan is fine, do you think the land use of some sort of fraternal lodge would be appropriate in this strip of land?
I would say it's a major arterial into the city, so I don't personally see any particular issue with its intensity along a busy road, on the same road that a school is on, not two blocks down the road. So I don't, I don't have any particular aversion to having a Masonic lodge or a moose lodge or whatever it might be on this strip of the community, considering that none of them are houses, or most of the, this strip specifically are no longer houses, they're commercial businesses.
Thank you.
Mr. Gierba.
One of the things here, and maybe this is something we need to talk in general about defining the zoning, but it includes banks, credit unions, savings, and loan associations. We use that as a reason why we protested against the property across the street not to be rezoned for this type of purpose. So banks and credit unions don't seem like they're in office service. They seem like they're more of a retail establishment. Is there a way that we can better define this in the future, be less intense? I'm worried about the drive-through or actual bank type.
No, absolutely. That's definitely something that we can open up and look at, as all the uses. I would, I was already hoping to do that with the I-1 district, but I think the OS district would be another good candidate to better define what are our lower-intensity commercial uses and what are the higher, but not quite industrial, intensity commercial uses.
Yeah, because bringing these islands is a major important factor that the council wants, and I don't want to run into a being covered to what we've already tried to establish an issue, so whatever we can do to fix this. And then the other question, you already mentioned the nonconformity. Are there any other nonconforming, like signage or anything else that we need to grant to?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't believe the sign is on the roof of the property. I think it's just a regular monument sign, so no.
And then lastly, if the site plan's ever redone, whatever, then we would be putting in like setbacks and such on the front where we require more green space than how it currently is paid by.
Right, so yeah, it would be the green belt standard on the rear and the, on the front. I guess I don't, I don't know what the property immediately to the south is, if that's also residential, but there would definitely be some negotiation if you did a larger site redevelopment on those green belt standards and what would be expected. At least screening would technically be required.
Just concerned if the, if the parking lot's redone, whatever, if I require. Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Chair, I'll move to acknowledge your seat of amendment dated August the 16th. Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Would the applicant like to make comment?
Good greetings to everybody here, welcome to Lodi. My name's Mitch Road.
Can you turn the mic on? Make sure the green light is illuminated at the base, Mitch.
There we go. Well, look, technology helping us out. My name is Mitch Road. I'm known well and far around here as the CEO of Quantum Signal AI, which is down the street in the Union School and, or a wholly-owned Ford subsidiary, working robotics, but I'm not here in that capacity this evening. I'm here as representing my business entities, Astrack Holdings, and Just a Fuse, who are the holders of Union School, as well as hopefully this property coming up in the near future. I brought my family to Celine in 2003 as a great community in which to raise my kids and to have a good time and have a good, safe environment, and et cetera, et cetera. In 2010, my business, Quantum Signal, was recruited to Celine by, by the Chamber of Commerce head, as well as his assistant, to bring us down, bring Quantum Signal down to create some high-technology jobs. At the same time, we had the idea that perhaps we could reuse Union School as, as a underutilized property that could be invested in and built up and used for the purposes of a high-technology company. We thought that was a great idea. We worked with the City Council of Celine and with the administration, and were able to bring that to fruition. So for the last 13 years, I've invested significant amounts of time, effort, and money into rehabbing and reusing Union School to great success, I might argue. We have approximately 50 engineers in there doing all sorts of cool things and, and using that property to the nines, which is a stark contrast to what it could have been or should have been, because I know the time there was some consideration of even tearing something like that down. So clearly, I have some interest, not only in building up and investing in Celine, but in, in the rehabbing and reuse of facilities and antique buildings that I think are cool and worthwhile. When I saw the Celine Picture Frame Company building, I saw kind of exactly the same thing. I saw an awesome antique building that could be reused and, and repurposed for something interesting. And speaking with the owners, the Boweys, one of which is here representing tonight, they were looking to retire from the business or at least turn down the, the volume on what they were doing there, and we thought it would be a good, a good thing to get together and see what we could do on this, on the situation. And so after eight and a half months so far pursuing this opportunity, here we are. I think that we're getting very close, and with your help, we can get even closer. I would love to start investing in that property, fixing it up, insulating it, improving the electrical and other things, so I can move, as you saw in the letter in there, so I can move my antique coin-operated equipment collection into there. I've been collecting arcade games since the late 80s and, and had at one point 160 games. I'm down to a nice, cool 70 games right now, but, but I'm a fairly well-known collector of these things, and this would give them a great new home, as well as providing a home to the Celine Picture Frame Company as it winds down operations for the next X years. So, so I'm here to answer any questions and tell you anything I can about it, but I do truly appreciate your consideration here this evening, and like I said, happy to answer any questions.
Question? Where are those games now? And tell me about the environment in which they operate.
Where they are now is, some of them are located actually in Union School, so the, some of the staff enjoy those games. Other ones are located in storage facilities, and they've had kind of, you know, I've collected them from all over the country and actually all over the world for, like I said, 30-plus years, and they've moved from barn to storage unit to my garage, to my basement, to on and on and on. And so giving them a more established home, that is a better place for them, that is a consistent thing, because every time you move them, it kind of causes harm. You have to undo the harm. And they're very, I mean, they are, you know, 40-plus-year-old electronics and more sometimes. And so, so the environment that we're going to have is, we're basically going to better insulate the building, improve the electrical, improve some of the HVC, make sure it's a good, controlled environment for these games, well-lit, well-secured, and thus be something that, you know, these things are preserved and that, that, you know, we can enjoy them in a way that, that isn't going to be a dirty barn or a human environment or something that further damages the antiques. And I mean, they truly are antiques, so. Now, does that answer your question, sir?
Yep, it does. Thank you.
Awesome. Yes, sir.
Is the public available to use these games, or you just have private?
Well, that's, that was one of the concerns when I first talked to the township was, you know, immediately when I said arcade games, they said, well, he's opening a Pinball Pete's, and that is, that is not the case here. As much as it would be fun to open it up on a daily basis for people to play, arcade games like, like what I have are fun to folks of a certain age bracket like myself, but, but the kids nowadays are really not into the really, really old games, and so they're much more of an antique piece and it's something to, much more of a historical thing than it is necessarily something that kids want on an everyday, come and play. And thus, my, my thought process was to perhaps, you know, once or twice a month, open it up to either some enthusiasts to come in for a couple hours and play with them, or maybe we could have a public event or two and that sort of thing. Obviously, we're constrained by, we don't want to cause any problems, and I certainly don't want to make any issues for the folks that are around there and increase the, kind of the, you know, the footprint there. This is supposed to be a low-traffic thing, not a high-traffic thing, and so, so I think that there were some, there was definitely some misunderstandings among some of the neighbors initially that thought perhaps I was trying to do something of very high-impact, oh, we're opening a Pinball Pete's, and that's, that's really not it. But you know, if anyone really is truly interested, I'm always happy to show off the collection to folks, so, but.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
I appreciate the consideration, everybody.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to open the public hearing at 7:20, affording the public an opportunity to speak to this issue. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
I was lucky enough to see this amazing collection that Mitch has, and he truly is a collector and appreciates the old technology that a lot of us in this room that went to arcades in the 80s and 70s grew up with, and I really think this is a great idea, rehabbing this building and giving back to the community in that way. So I really, really hope you consider it as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Move to close the public hearing at 7:21. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Any comments on the proposal?
Just one last question, a clarification. Mr. Harrington, we're calling this office service. This will not conflict with anything in the annexation agreement as it states something about keeping this property commercial for the next 20 years.
The office service is technically a commercial district, so no, there won't be an issue with that.
I just want to get that in the public record. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I'd just reiterate my concern that we're, we're making a decision minutes before we're making a bigger decision that could make the decision we're making now a bad decision. Because if we don't approve the office rezoning, but we do approve the office zoning for this lot, it's not going to look very good. I have no issues at all. In fact, I appreciate exactly what the applicant's doing, what he's done, Union School, all that, but to approve this as office when we haven't decided the rest of it, which I have concerns about the rest of it being office, I just can't see why we would do that.
Any response?
The reason why I'm supporting this, because directly north of this is the, it's already a professional building. It's a dent shop, and actually, that one is already starting to be a consideration of all the parking and everything that's happening with it, but I feel like this is an extension of what's known there already. It's not like it's a floating island. It's a similar type. Even though it may be professional, this potentially both of them are serving the same kind of function in the future, so that, like you said, this was converted, was used for a purpose. I believe that both of those properties could be combined and made a larger office service type situation. It's not like it's an island.
No, it's not, Mr. Gierba, but when you started, again, no issue at all with the way it's being proposed, but that has really no bearing on our decision. It's the lodges, it's the healthcare product sales, it's the, the things that really aren't, it's the banks, the credit unions, it's the things that really we don't think about when we think about office that could go into this property next month, next year, whatever. Just doesn't make sense to me that we'd want those businesses on this very narrow road.
Mr. Harrington, let me, what's the, what's the key difference between professional and office services?
Yeah, I kind of figured that question. I was going to come, so these are the allowed uses in professional business. So your office buildings allowed for physician, dentist, attorney, chiropractor, accountant, engineer, single-family detached dwellings, parks, cemeteries, home-based businesses, accessory uses, and then some slightly, a little bit more offices, and then offices that are occupied by the professions that are similar to that of one but not specifically listed. Childcare centers and two-family dwellings are all allowed through special land use. So this is, from my perspective, far more of something you would put in a residential neighborhood, so I'm converting, I, I think of the Raymond James right up the road at the intersection of McKay and North Ann, and it is North Ann Arbor there as well, whereas the conversion of an existing home, there's no possibility really for it to be anything except a home, or maybe a home converted into an office, versus I think looking at some of these other properties on North Ann Arbor, they definitely have the appearance of a traditional commercial property, so they're not homes. They were designed for a commercial business. So that's what I would say is the big difference, and when we were coming up with a recommendation of what should it be rezoned as, because it has to be rezoned, we would chose OS as like the most logical, just based on the site characteristics.
I thought most of the buildings in this island were ex-homes.
I guess I can't speak to that. I know some of them are ex-homes, but the picture frame shop, for example, definitely has the appearance of a commercial building. It has a paved parking lot out front, as if it's a commercial.
Always been a commercial structure. I believe it was built by the original proprietors of Otto's Cheese Shop in the, Sarah might be able to help me, shortly after the Second World War.
Yeah.
It's been a commercial enterprise ever since.
Right. So I, I, that was where our recommendation, both for the master plan future land use map as well as the specific site, and you have to have them in tandem. So you would have to, I have to propose a master plan amendment along with this to reconcile our zoning with the future land use map. As we are actively updating the plan, we're effectively doing that, it's just somewhat asynchronous because of the nature of a public hearing for an ordinance versus reviewing the draft of the master plan.
Any other questions? I'm ready to vote. Is there a motion to approve? Take you to recommend and adopt, or not to adopt, Mr. Chair? Is there a motion to recommend and adopt the new ordinance, or not adopt?
I'll move that we adopt the new ordinance number 858 to amend the zoning of the parcel M-1336400-001, located at 7641 North Ann Arbor, Celine, Michigan, 4176, from AG Agriculture to OS Office Service.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Will the Kirk please call the roll?
Beardley?
Nay.
Carroll?
Yea.
Cole?
Yea.
Bosdick?
Yea.
Gierba?
Yea.
Marl?
Yeah, you can't vote here. It's got to be a yes or no.
Troika?
No, no, no. Heft's got to vote yes or no.
Yes.
Okay.
I thought you said.
Sorry, I didn't mean to be abrupt, but we got to get yes or nos.
Yes. Okay. Marl?
Yes.
Troika?
Yes.
Young?
Motion passes. Next item, new business, 23-21, the 2023 Celine Master Plan Draft, motion to submit to the Celine City Council, the 2023 Celine Master Plan Draft for review and comment and approval of the distribution of the plan. Mr. Chair?
Absolutely. Just one second here, has to move a couple files around, and just kind of look that up. So it is the City of Celine Master Plan Draft. It was given an official action item of 2321. So just to take us where we're at in the process, so about a year ago, last August, we decided to update the master plan and created a steering committee that included Commissioner Beardley, Commissioner Young, Councilmember Gierba, and Mayor Marl. They narrowed the update down to four main topics, along with Planner Harbach and myself, to housing, downtown, transportation, and environment, sustainability, and resilience. to housing, downtown, transportation, and environment, sustainability, and resilience. Since then, we've held three in-person engagement sessions, two last fall, and then one recently two weeks ago. We completed two supporting studies and allocated funding for another. We crafted and administered an online survey for additional public input, and then we created a draft version of the plan that is before you this evening. So in terms of what's left to do, so we're all clear, the draft of the master plan is on your agenda this evening for consideration, with the specific action being submit to the Saleen City Council, the 2023 Master Plan Draft for review and comment and approval of the distribution of the plan. And provided that you choose to submit the draft this evening, the City Council will review it on September 11th, and then have the opportunity to approve the distribution of the plan to neighboring municipalities, utilities, and railroad, public, and as well as the larger public. The state has a minimum 63-day waiting period, which is why we have to have this in somewhat of a awkward, releasing it for comment, and then acknowledging the comment and making those changes. So between September 11th, provided that you submit it, provided that they release it on the planning commission meetings on December, oh, sorry, September 27th, October 11th, and October 25th, it is our intent to bring back potentially specific sections that you're interested in going over in a more granular fashion. The plan is over 100 pages is what you were given in your packet, so I did not necessarily expect that you would all have robust comments ready to go tonight, but I'm glad to take whatever you got. So we'll have the opportunity to bring back specific sections that are of interest to you or of interest to us to really narrow out and hammer out the details that we want to be present in the plan. And then provided that all goes smoothly, that the public likes it, that you all like it, on November 20th, we can bring it back to the City Council where they may formally adopt it. It will also come back to you for one final round of recommendation before it goes to them. So between now and then, I'd just like to reiterate that I will continue to review and to respond to any additional feedback, questions, or concerns you have. Please don't hesitate to reach out, whether it's just a grammatical thing or something larger that you really want to discuss at more detail and length, I'm happy to have those conversations and meetings. I'm not going to go too much into the public engagement results. This is somewhat almost identical to what I shared at that town hall, but just to give you a brief overview of what we learned over the last nine months, we held three formal public engagement sessions, about 60 total attendees across those three. We had numerous forms of informal engagements such as meeting with high school classes, meeting with various boards and commissions here, and then meeting with concerned residents one-on-one or in sometimes a group fashion. We administered an online survey that had about 400 responses, and the posters that we displayed sharing all the information about to give you, as well as far more detail and depth, were all included at the end of your packet, and they will be attached as appendices to whatever master plan we end up adopting in a few months from now. So just to go over comments on downtown, there was a general consensus that the city should be creating more engaged, engaging places. There wasn't really a consensus on what those places should be, and that's going to require a dedicated study and plan in and of itself. We've already allocated funding for that, which is the silver lining there. And generally speaking, as I'm sure it's something you've all heard, there's a desire to see more retail shopping, entertainment options, and restaurants in downtown Saleen. For housing, the public identified housing for young families and young adults as a top priority. Housing for seniors was definitely identified more by those who attended the in-person engagement sessions, which is not surprising if you consider the sampling bias you get at a public meeting versus what you get on an online survey. We had clear support for adding more single-family homes, accessory dwelling units, and town homes in the community, but definitely noticeably less support for multifamily and apartment developments. For transportation, about 50% of responses, both in person and over that survey, cited safety concerns as a reason for not walking in Saleen. They mentioned sidewalks and pathways as top priorities, and then generally a need for better options for those who are seniors and those with disabilities in our community when it comes to getting around Saleen. And then lastly, environment, sustainability, and resilience, capital investments such as new play structures and exercise equipment in parks, as well as non-motorized transit improvements, really again on that sidewalks and pathways notes, were considered top priorities for our investment in our own parks in the community. Stormwater management on the online survey really scored highly as a key area of concern in our community. And then there was just general support for efforts to promote energy sustainability. There's only so much we can do in that regard as we're not the utility company, but interesting nevertheless. And then I just have a note, again, please take time to review those posters that Mike made. They're really excellent, they're great visuals, and I think they definitely display the feedback and the data we've gotten pretty well. To hop into how the plan is laid out, if you haven't fully delved into it yet, it starts with a summary of background studies and some demographic data that have all been updated to reflect the last five years. We have 2020 census data in there, as well as some American Community Survey, which is a splinter aspect of the census. We have the goals and policy section, which have seven overarching goals for the plan that have been tweaked a little bit in the last five years. And then additionally, there's 10 policy areas, each with their own specific goals, and then each of those goals have objectives. So it's kind of goalception here, but essentially, we're really trying to hammer down what we're trying to do and then implement it. And the goals and policy sections is really the meat of the visioning and aspirations of the city, as is the future land use section, which has that future land use map we were just talking about, and then new sub-area designations and guidelines that I'll show you here in just a minute, that are also really laid out fully in that section of the plan. And then lastly, implementation is the area where the most change has occurred, and I'll hop into that in a second, in appendix sections. So at least for now, I would imagine that goals and policy and future land use would both be good agenda items for two separate meetings to kind of go over those sections with you all in a little bit more detail. But if you read it through and think it's fantastic, that's great news, and we don't have to do that, but I think it would be great for all of us to really understand what those sections say and then have a conversation on them, and maybe a little bit more informal of a setting. For implementation, as I mentioned, this is a word of your slide, but this is the biggest change. The 2017 implementation section is about two to four pages, really two pages of text. The document, the 2017 master plan, is in its totality 87 pages. So therein lies the crux of the issue here, where we have this great plan and then very little details on implementing it. So for this upcoming plan, each objective, as I mentioned, its objective has a goal which is tied to a policy area. We have steps for each of them. We have assigned a responsible party for each step, and then we provide an estimated year when we would hope to complete that step of the plan. There are about 80 objectives and over 200 proposed action steps for staff. I think that's only going to grow as time goes on. But most importantly, this is a requirement of Michigan's redevelopment-ready communities, which is titled RRC. So they're one of the people that are going to help us fund that downtown corridor design study that I mentioned earlier, but also they provide us more funding opportunities for a community. And really, their whole program is structured through the state after getting feedback from developers of what do you need to see from communities to have confidence in investing in them. And the state will give us more grant dollars for being a part of this program, and I think that we'll become a more attractive community just simply by the labeling of the program so that people know that we are a redevelopment-ready community. And I'll just add, in the implementation plan itself, the proposed steps are not perfect. They're meant to be jumping off points and really just to get the ball rolling on some of these issues. But I would hope that we're going to track to track the actual steps as a means of building and retaining institutional knowledge. So we're no longer just going to be, "Oh, I know that one guy at MDOT from 15 years ago." We're going to have a name and a contact list, and who do we actually contact at MDOT? Who is effective at getting the change that we needed to see happen? And that way, we're not tying my knowledge that I gained throughout this process to me, we're really giving it to the city so that people who come after me in any different capacity that it might be, will have the opportunity to kind of lean into that knowledge and see how we can move the needle faster for Saleen. And then here's just an excerpt of the implementation plan. Again, this is part of that packet, it's going to be towards the back. But you can see that we have very clear steps, we have responsible parties, and we have a timeline for completion. Planner Arbach and I might do some more tweaking just to make it a little bit more straightforward and less lengthy, although it couldn't be two pages, it probably shouldn't be 20 in the full printed version either, which is kind of where we're at with it. So definitely condensing and making it more of a clear implementation matrix as opposed to this larger table that I've created. And then moving into updated maps before we can kind of kick off the discussion here, you'll notice on all the maps, we updated city boundaries to reflect the annexation of Belleterris on Maple Road. There are a few discrepancies that were kind of hangovers from the 2017 map. That would be the definition of like accidentally, you know, declaring something by imagining theater part of our central business or downtown district. So it's really just removing those caveats. Additionally, we started calling it a downtown district rather than a central business district. It's by far and away a semantic change, but I think it's kind of an important semantic change as the field of planning evolves and as the idea of the central business district kind of changes over time. Additionally, one of the bigger changes I think that we made was recognizing the formal hospital campus, which is now operated by Evangelical Homes, as a commercial user rather than single-family residential, which it is both zoned as and is designated for as a future land use. And then additionally, we created three unique sub-areas along the US 12 Michigan Ave corridor, which I'll show you on the next slide here. So originally, you might be able to see here, but it's kind of hard. On the left side, we have the Michigan Ave sub-area, which goes from the downtown out west through the end of the city boundary. After thinking about it, after talking about it with our subcommittee, I'm sorry, with our steering committee, with Planner Arbach, obviously, the city does not develop that way. The west side of the town is not identical to downtown. They both have their own unique circumstances and situations and patterns of development. So we changed that to a downtown sub-area, a west Michigan Ave sub-area, and then also carved out the commercial corridor along East Michigan Avenue that has not developed into industrial as was anticipated 40 years ago. So we created three unique sub-areas with their own different design, objectives, and goals, and you'll see that all in the plan for those three sub-areas. And I'd really like to get your feedback and thoughts on what you hope those areas will become. And then on the future land use map, you'll notice, again, some of these, I only changed mine. On the future land use map, again, you'll see some of these spot changes here on the right of the map, on the east side of the city, where it had some of these central business district outlining. We fixed Maple Cove, which had some land denoted for industrial that has over time become residential, the hospital campus, as well as that island that we've talked about at the last rezoning hearing here. So items that we'd like to kind of discuss with you tonight, after your first reading and viewing of the plan, are there any items that are glaring and in need of attention? Have you identified any omissions from the plan already that you believe need to be addressed? Are there specific sections that you would really like us to spend more time on? And again, this is a very open-ended document, and we'd just like to know if there are aspects of the plan that you would like us to investigate more, whether you don't like the color scheme or anything like that, we're all ears. So our recommendation is, because we're not married to any aspect of this plan, is to submit to the Saleen City Council for review, comment, and approval of the distribution for the 63-day review period. We have the opportunity over the next couple of months to fine-tune, to make these granular changes, but unless you feel the plan is totally off-base, I think it'd be a good idea to move it forward, and we can continue to work on making this document what you really hope it to be.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. So this question is primarily for the public's benefit, those in the audience, and more importantly, those who will be watching at home. So again, for planning commissions edification, it's ultimately the City Council that approves this, this document as a tool that will guide planning and decision-making for the next five years.
That is correct. So the Michigan State Planning Enabling Act technically grants the planning commission the right, but most communities, including our own, often adopt a resolution, as we did last Monday, that the City Council is the final approving body, as has been the pattern over the last couple decades here.
And assuming that planning commissioners don't see any glaring errors or deficiencies, it would be appropriate to move submittal to City Council, who will consider this at their next meeting, which would be on September the 11th?
That's correct.
Okay. And then City Council would take subsequent action to distribute the plan for additional community input and to regional stakeholders?
That's correct.
And they have the, it was a 63-day period to do so?
Yeah, so they would tell them, they would approve the distribution, and then my office would distribute it.
And during that 63-day period, if we receive any feedback, suggestions, comments, or concerns, those would go, of course, to your office and then subsequently to both City Council and to Planning Commission?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
So during the 63-day review process, if we receive from regional stakeholders or individual citizens questions, concerns, suggestions, those would, of course, be directed to your office with subsequent distribution to City Council and to the Planning Commission?
Yes, we could do that. Yeah, so either way, they would end up in the appendices of the plan.
Okay.
In their file.
Very good. I, to allow planning commissioners ample time to review the document in its totality, you made inference to this early in your remarks. I think having, taking some time, sometime during the next 60-plus days, to perhaps convene a planning commission meeting in a more relaxed setting, i.e. a work meeting, to go over this in a more granular fashion would be, would be beneficial. And maybe that can be done near the end of that 63-day period so we can incorporate any comments, concerns, questions we receive from citizens or regional stakeholders.
Absolutely.
But that would be, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Thank you. Just wanted to go over the process, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
Yes. First of all, phenomenal work. Just incredible amount of forethought and preparation and intention at not only updating but also execution, and just really great organization. You showed some slides on the presentation that aren't in here, particularly where things have changed in recommendations, or if it's in here.
Right, on the maps themselves, right, yes. I apologize, we did not redline the maps.
I think that would be really be helpful, because I think I would have missed the recommended change from professional to office on that North Ann Arbor stretch, because the colors are so close. So I think as we deliberate over the next 60 days, if we had a sense of what has changed, even if it's just bulleted, it might be helpful. And the second thing is, there's a number of tables where the header is blue and so is the print, and so you can't, can't really read it and know what it says. So that might be helpful to, to distribute during that 60-day period.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can provide you those redlined maps at the very least, I apologize.
Ends of 63 days is triggered subsequent to City Council approving the distribution on September 11th.
That is correct.
So it basically takes us to the end of the calendar year.
To the end of November, for sure.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
Move to acknowledge you received the memo dated August 18th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any comments on the process?
So we still, and maybe you're just answering this from there, and I may have tuned out for a little bit. We still have plenty of time to modify, change, this everything.
That is correct.
Knowing that council will now do in terms of making a recommendation based on this motion, will impact that, correct?
That is correct. Unless, like, you decide that the 63 days isn't enough and you want to wague over that, which is a scenario I talked to Mike about, then we would have to re-notice and re-instigate the 63-day process. But no, we are not, by approving the distribution of the draft, we are not marrying ourselves to it unless you've made some total, complete, massive overhaul of the whole plan, I believe. Even still, I don't know if he would technically be required to re-notice.
That's right. There's nothing in the act that says you can't make as many changes as you like after the plan is distributed. If down the road, there, the commission and council do want to make a lot of changes to the document, then either body could decide at that point that if you feel it's more appropriate to re-notice it, then you could do that. But you're not tied to what's on the agenda, so.
Basically saying, conceptually, we think this looks good.
No, no, I understand that. I just want to make sure there isn't anything where, should we have a hiccup like that